Call this meeting to order, determine if there's a quorum. The President, Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Vazquez, Commissioner Fuentes, and myself, there is a quorum. Commissioner Nettleton had to be in Comstock for a meeting on our solar farm. If y'all will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Wardlaw, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Item four, approving bills for payment. The bill's in front of you. Part of it is the part of the shelter. There's $114,875.12 in other than paying a motion. If y'all have already lifted it. Where are we getting the money from? If there's all the, all these have their own separate accounts where we're going to get the money though. If the question is on the third one down, other county expenditures, James J. Wilson, that is the Diamond Woman Shelter. That was one of the main reasons that we also called this meeting was to get it paid. That one there, we have $180,000 set aside in our budget. We are looking into signing another MOU with the city for 90,000 of that, but we do have a line, an expenditure in the budget for 180,000, which totals at 15,000 every month. I'll make the motion that we pay the $114,875.12 from the money set aside.
Second, Senator.
I have a motion. Commissioner Fuentes, second, Commissioner Vazquez, all those in favor. I, anybody against? Motion carries, four zero. Item five, discussing possible license on Old Foster, Moreno Valley subdivision. I wrote this, like this, to Old Foster Road and Moreno Valley subdivision because just for the Old Foster Road, and we've already gone over this, but we'll save it one more time. Old Foster Road is a part of our county road law. It was put on there, it is on there. I believe it was put on there by mistake, but if we were to do any part of this, and we'll listen to all the comments, but if we were to do any part of this, I think the main concern that we would have right now is the Old Foster, the Moreno Valley, the part that Moreno Valley is of Old Foster Road, to determine if Old Foster Road is actually a big part of county road. So let's begin with, Gabriel Zapata?
Good evening, Commissioners and County Judge Owens. My name is Gabriel Zapata. I live in Moreno Valley and I am a leader of the board organization. Along with other residents of Moreno Valley, we're in need of water, basic resources, services. The solution is simple. We're asking the Commissioners Court to vote to declare that Old Foster Road is a road that is maintained by the county. It's open because it's recorded in the Vavari County Maintain Road Book. Now let's be clear, to declare that Old Foster Road is a county maintained is a necessary first step to getting water to the people of Moreno Valley. The board organization has contacted state officials and their response is that maintaining the road has nothing to do with violating the model subdivision rule. To maintain the road, there are any number of state and federal grants that the county can apply for. It is within your power to bring the water to people of Moreno Valley. If you decide not to maintain the Old Foster Road, it's not because it's not legal, it's not because there aren't any grants to make it happen. So let's, let's do what's right for the people of county. It's in your power to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Ms. Cardenas, Isma?
Good evening, Commissioners and County Judge Owens. My name is Isma Cardenas and a TBO leader. I am not a resident of Moreno Valley, but I want to encourage you to do right for the people of Moreno Valley. Accept that Old Foster Road is a road maintained by the county, a first step to getting water to the people. As Commissioners and County Judge, your responsibility goes beyond maintaining roads and bridges. You have the responsibility to assure the safety and welfare of the people of the county. It is not healthy for people not to have water. It is not safe for them. It's not safe for the rest of the people in the county. The reason people live longer today is because they have access to clean drinking water. To not take this first step is to neglect your responsibility as Commissioners and County Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Gonzalez.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Judge. My name is Karen Gonzalez. I am a TBO leader. I want to add my voice to those that have testified this evening. First of all, I want to thank you for scheduling this meeting in the evening, otherwise I would not have been able to attend. It's time to begin to solve this issue. You know what you have to do, you know what the right thing is to do. It's time to make it happen. Vote to recognize that Old Foster Road is a road maintained by the county. The road is used by Border Patrol, National Guard, sheriff's deputies, county fire, and emergency units. It should be recognized as a road maintained by the county to bring water to the people of Moreno Valley, but also to provide for the safety of the people who live in the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Garza? Ondi?
Gauna.
Gauna? Okay, sorry, I had a really poor one, huh? Sorry about that one.
Good evening, Commissioners and...
Did you have another one for Moreno Valley?
Titus? You want to let him go first? I'm sorry about that.
Buenas tardes. Wes Owens and Condado de Valverde County, nuestro condado. Soy el pastor Benchares, líder de la board organization. Estoy aquí para apoyar a estas personas de Moreno Valley. Creo que en mi caso es la tercera vez que yo estoy aquí para apoyarles con el mismo asunto, con el mismo tema. Y yo quiero decir lo siguiente, que no sé hoy no haya muchas veces lo que ustedes han presentado o han decidido, pero yo quiero apelar a su compasión, a su misericordia, a esos buenos valores que recibieron en sus hogares, de sus padres. Y también quiero apelar a que son personalidades elegidas para gobernarnos, y esas personas elegidas tienen una responsabilidad con nuestra gente, y la responsabilidad es buscar soluciones eficientes, efectivas, verdad, para esos problemas que tenemos en nuestra comunidad. Y bueno, nos gustaría que ya no pudiéramos estar aquí y no ser como aquella mujer que buscó justicia, verdad, con aquel juez injusto y estaba detrás del juez, y entonces el juez dijo, "Muerda la justicia porque viene a todas horas, en la medianoche, y para que ya no venga", entonces, y la solución. Apelamos a su humanidad, apelamos a sus valores, y muchas gracias.
Thank you. Okay, what's your...
Good evening, Commissioners, Judge. So I'm here basically to speak also in tandem with the Old Foster Road. I am not a resident of Moreno Valley. I live off of Vega Verde, so I'm assuming it's a whole other area, but my road is Pace Miller Drive. That goes into Old Foster Road, and I'm assuming it's a county road because it's labeled, it's got a name, it's not Old Foster anymore like it used to be. If it has been adopted, which I think I pulled up some old records, public records, and it looked like it is, my asking is it be maintained? When it rains there, it, there's at least 12-inch crevices that show up, there's cane that overgrows the sides of it. It's near impassable, it's super muddy, it's, you know, our personal cars got to go through there, and like the young lady over here was saying, we, you know, we're not the only ones that use it. Postal Service, UPS guys, FedEx, EMS has gone up there, Border Patrol, Sheriff, you know, they, they use this road. So when it's hard to get through, it's, you know, it's, I mean, it's not good for anybody. And if, if it's a county road, I believe it should be maintained. Hope we're asking that it gets maintained. We've asked a couple of times. I know there's been some emails sent, there's, there's been some requests, but if we can get some clarification, maybe some answers, some direction, you know, am I wrong that it's not a county road? Is, you know, can we maintain something? Because, I mean, it's getting kind of crazy, and we've had our own personal residents in that area, you know, blade it, clean it with their own tractors, and, I mean, it's, if it's a county road, that's not, that's not necessary. So I'm just asking if, you know, we can look into something. I don't even, asphalt would be great, but...
I'll have the county engineer looking to it, see if it's a county road. If it is a county road, we'll go and maintain it.
Okay, well, that includes, you know, the, the side of it?
Yeah, totally, the side.
Everything's coming in. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, I'll get started if y'all don't mind. You all right?
Sure, yeah.
First of all, first person that came up to talk, he said about Mr. Zapata not for water, and, and you hit the nail right on the head. First, the road needs to be a county road, all right, before we can apply for grants for water, or we have to designate it a county road. And this is same thing we've said all along. When we were looking at a, we can't find anywhere that, you correct me if I'm wrong, we can't find anything that that road was ever a county road, or that the counties accepted it. In 1950, 1982, Judge Gonzalez signed the plat for Moreno Valley. There's a little paragraph on there that says that he's signing the plat with no obligation to the county for the road. I've got the plat back there if y'all want to look at it. So first of all, in my opinion, I don't believe that this road is a county road, and I'm talking about Old Foster Road. And for sure, Moreno's not. In my opinion, when we bought land out there, when people bought land out there, you already knew which y'all were buying. And it's not an excuse to state in fact. Y'all already knew that there was no water, the road was not maintained, that there was nothing there. We presented a plan to, to be able to bring it to the court, not, not a complete solution, but a plan for the residents of Moreno Valley that actually are on Old Foster Road to pay a portion of the materials for Old Foster Road, which is in Moreno Valley subdivision or vice versa. That plan was rejected. So in my opinion, I don't think that it's fair for everybody else to pay for a subdivision that was not put in properly, and then for all the other taxpayers to pay for it. This meeting is to give y'all, I guess, an answer in order for y'all to go do whatever y'all think is necessary to move forward, all right? We did, again, present y'all with a plan for a certain dollar amount per lien, per lien your feet of whatever your lot is that fronts the road. I personally would, and again, it's just, I'm just one up here right now, four. If that plan was put in place and we were able to collect those funds in order to be able to, to make that road and bring it up to a standard, then, you know, my, my opinion would change. But right now, what we're dealing with is, in my opinion, is, is this road a county road, and should we maintain it in order to be able to go apply for water? And if we were taking the other step, that would be different. And, you know, I just, we haven't, I haven't changed my mind as to, and I've always said that I don't believe it's a county road. We've talked to our engineer, we visited with our county attorney, and I don't believe that it's a county, that it should be maintained by the county or that it's a county road. If there was another process for the material or something to be paid for, then I would probably change my mind. But I don't believe that it is a county road. David, I mean, is there anything else that I'm missing?
No, you know, I, I know that there was some communication between Ms. Wytis and Bob Bass, I believe in Allison Bass. I believe you had a communication with Bob Bass from Allison Bass, the attorney of Austin.
Right, and so that law from, is one of that, is that me?
Yes, ma'am.
That law from Adam Austin are the ones that, that put that Old Foster Road in the list of county maintain roads. And that's all we're basing it on, right? Whether that Old Foster Road was put on there on that law by mistake, then it should be taken off. And, and there's a, my understanding is a long lengthy process to take it off, but it's been on there for, I don't know, how many years? 20 years? Longer? It's been on there. So I, I think if I understood you, Judge Owens, the mistake was done, it should have never been in that law, I think is what I'm hearing you say. That is not this resident's fault. Now, your comment about people knew, went in eyes wide open, went full well that that was not developed property, so did the county. The county knew that that lost last year had never been sold. There's a big old "For Sale" sign by a real estate agent saying, "Lot for sale", and the county knew, in fact, the county had a, a sign that said, "Senator's Terrace to the right, Moreno Valley subdivision to the left." So it was recognized by the, the county. It's been recognized by the county all along, and it's on the books, it's on the books. So that it's been there by mistake 20 years ago, and I think the board organization, we've been at it, what, I don't know how many times we've been here concerning Moreno Valley, the, it's on the books, there's no question about it, it's on the books. My street, Pax Saddle Circle's on the book, and Commissioner Vazquez maintains Pax Saddle Circle. Old Foster Road is on the book, and it should be maintained.
The son that I'm going back to the signs where you're saying that it's dated, that it was Moreno Valley subdivision this way, there was also a sign that said, "Caporal Evadis". That's not county, but the previous commissioner put up those signs there just to tell people where this place was.
The point is saying that...
But doesn't mean that they're county.
My point is saying that, that it's recognized by the county, telling people, there's a subdivision, but the name was Moreno Valley, going that way. That's all I'm saying, that it was recognized. And it was not only recognized, but people that bought property there knowing full well that it was not developed, right? As we all know, the developer has seen Skype, okay? He told some of the purchasers that, hey, the county's going to come in, okay? The real estate person told them, oh, there's no water, but you can dig your own well, leaving out the fact that that water has suffered. So were they missteps, the drop, the fall drop in, in the mud steps? Yes, there were. There were, you know, there was. Now, the other point in all this is like one of the speakers said, that road is used by National Guard, sheriff's deputies, emergency, I don't know who else, you know. Wouldn't it behoove the county to have a drivable road for, for them? Not for the residents of Moreno Valley, at least for, for the governmental agencies to use for their vehicles, you know? Wouldn't that be good? Unless I'm missing something.
And I did speak to Mr. Bass also, and it wasn't 20 years, I think it's either 2011 or, or 2012. So it's been about...
Ten, ten years.
About 10 years, more or less. And, and Mr. Bass did state that typically the presumption in the law is that if a road is on that list, that it is a county road. But he also recognized and indicated that a road can be placed on there erroneously. When I explained to him the plat in 1982 and how all that came to be, he admitted, he said, "Well, then that, that really is there in error, and it should not be a county road on that inventory of roads, or on a map, or whatever you want to call that list." So we come back to square one, and I think that there may be some, some confusion as to whether or not a county road is necessarily a public road or vice versa. You know, I know you indicated there's signage indicating, you know, where, you know, where different things lie. The fact that, that a road may be dedicated to the public doesn't automatically make it a county road, it may be a public road. So that may be an explanation as to why the previous commissioner may have placed some of that signage there. But again, the simple fact that a road is a public road doesn't in and of itself qualify it as a county road. So again, we come back to square one, what happened or didn't happen in 1982 when that plat was accepted with that condition.
And I might be mistaken, currently wrong, but there was a whole process just to put roads on that law, on that book, right? There's, I mean, there's a whole process, there's...
Yes, ma'am.
Checks and balances.
Right.
And how is it their fault that checks and balances were missed?
And by no, I don't think anybody is saying that it's anybody's fault. The facts are what they are. I don't think anybody's saying that the residents are at fault for this. That, that's not at all, I don't think, I don't think you've heard that from any earlier court.
So what's, what's the issue then? Would it be that difficult, or would it be that costly?
I can give you my opinion, just my opinion, one of four. I won't vote to accept this road in the condition that it's in unless the, the landowners that are there put up some funds in order to bring this to some type of standard other than the way it sits right now. I don't think it's fair, and we're saying taxpayers, and fair to everybody else, to absorb that money, absorb that burden on this piece of property. That's my opinion, Ms. Wytis, and again, if there was a plan, which we presented y'all with a plan to, to, to pay a certain dollar amount per lien your foot, or a lot, however y'all wanted to do it, you know, then in my opinion, I would tell you would change. But in my opinion, right now, because the way it is, I, I just won't vote for it, Ms. Wytis.
How much do you think it would be?
$278,000 to do, I'll do some numbers. And again, this is just my opinion, it still has to go before the court, and I already said that that way. And I'll give you an idea. If you break it down, there's some lots on there that are 200, there's some that are 210, some of them that are 230, 235 feet in your feet across the, the front. If you do the math, on a 235-foot lot, it would be about $5,640.
But I mean, let's say that, that this court tonight will say, "Yeah, we're going to maintain it, we're going to improve it, and then we'll apply for it." How much would it be for that?
How much would it be to, if we were to approve the subdivision and then go do All this right here is just taking into consideration...
Just Old Foster Road?
Just Moreno Valley.
Okay.
The part of Old Foster that is Moreno Valley.
Right, that part.
Because I don't think, in my opinion, that we should burden them to, for the other little pieces.
Right, so how much would that be?
That part on just Moreno Valley's $278,000. That's just the material, that's no labor involved.
Okay, mile path figure on labor?
On the red? I don't, I don't know, I didn't...
Can we double that?
We could.
Okay, let's do 600,000? Okay, 600,000. Would you say that this court or previous courts have spent $600,000 or more on stuff that this community, this, you're laughing because you know where I'm going with this, and I'm not going to go into detail, I'm not going to go into details, but we as a community, as Commissioners Court, we have misspent, misused more than $600,000. So, back, back to my question. Could the court see this court tonight? Oh, by the way, Commissioner Wardlaw's not here, but when he met...
Commissioner Nettleton.
Nettleton, I'm sorry, you're here. And he confirmed, he goes, "In my opinion, it's county maintain road." Okay, it's been established, you're not arguing that anymore, but you're arguing that it was, wasn't supposed to be there to begin with, that's what you're arguing. Why don't we just leave it there? It was a mistake 12 years ago, 10 years ago, whenever, it's on, it's on the books, let's just move forward with that.
You want my opinion? If there's an issue, now that y'all are coming to us and telling us that there's an issue, we have to correct the problem. So either we accept it and leave it, or, or we take action in order to say, "Look, we're not going to accept it, and then we're going to go, not only we're going to do that, but we're going to move forward through the process and get this thing removed from our county road."
So how long has this court or you, Ms. Martinez, have known that it was there by mistake?
Ever since we've been talking, y'all.
So why hasn't it been removed? Because we've been at it for two years, right? So why hasn't, why hasn't this court done the process to remove it?
Because that actually could be started by the citizens as well, to keep it there.
Well, that's why we're here, we wanted to keep it there.
And that's how, we called this meeting again, called it at night because y'all wanted a meeting at night so you could have people here, so we can make a decision one way or another. And we've been going round and round with this, we still wanted to listen to y'all and move forward. But at this point, I, I think we're at the point now that we need to make a decision. And whatever that is, either we accept it the way it is right now, and then we figure out how to pave it, or we say, "Look, we're not going to, this isn't our county road, and we're going to, we have to move through the process to get it removed from our county road law." That needs to happen tonight.
But as of right now, it is a county maintain road.
It's not a county maintain road, no, ma'am. It's on the road law.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
It is on the...
It is on the road law, but it's on the road law by mistake.
Okay, but it is yours, though, but it is on the book, I mean, it's not ours, it's on the book, right, wrong, it's on the book. So you're right, you put it perfectly well, that is the question. Though I think for tonight, and I don't want to misspeak for anyone, I hope I'm asking the right question. The question I think for then is, is this court tonight going to leave that road there, accept it because it's there, or not?
And that's, that's hopefully the answer, that one or the other you will get tonight.
Yeah, I'm sure.
One or the other.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And then we can move forward with that. You got anything to tell us, or we're okay? However y'all want to appreciate, if you, if you'd like to... Well, I've already, I've already given my opinion, I don't, it's just my opinion. I think it was put on there by mistake, I don't think that we should maintain it. I think that if, if we go to maintain it, there has to be some money put up for the materials for the road, that's just my opinion. So y'all have comments?
I want to follow, I have a lot of compassion for a lot of people, and I'm here to listen, I'm listening to everything, but I do want to follow what Mr. David advises, he's our county attorney, so I want to, you know, whatever decisions take, and then, you know...
It's a big question to throw you. Judge, before I withdraw, I'd like to make a motion. I will make the motion not to accept this road on behalf of Moreno County or precinct four. The road does not meet model subdivision standards, and also to include in this motion for our county attorney to move forward the process of removing this road from the road David, within that motion, is there, is there enough in this motion to not say that the road should be on the road law? I, I believe so. I, I believe so, based on what we know about the, the history of the plat and all, yes. A second, Commissioner Wardlaw, is...
I will rephrase my motion.
Commissioner Wardlaw, wait a minute, we're sending that.
All right. Stating that there was an error done on the... Stating that there was an error done on, uh, on behalf of Bass and Allison?
Allison Bass.
Allison Bass, uh, putting this road on the road law book. So it needs to be removed as soon as possible. Commissioner Wardlaw.
Second. We'll start with Commissioner Wardlaw, uh, how do you vote? Yes or no on the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes.
Uh, myself, yes. Commissioner Flores, yes. Anybody against? There is, uh, nobody against the motion, motion carries 4-0. So there was, and this, there's an obstacle, y'all come up with some other something right after the court, but if we need a resolution, this is where we start.
We have a bad plot, we'll follow that.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item seven, discussion possible action on approval to increase employee development account by 1,500, turn around 7,000, at 1,500 it goes to 8,500. Uh, math the money to come from contingency?
Yes, Judge, that'll work.
Motion to approve and get the money from contingency.
I have a motion, Commissioner. Flores, second, Commissioner Vasquez, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries 4-0. Item seven, discussion possible action on approval to authorize judge to sign Texas workforce contract for disaster relief enforcement.
Motion to approve, I have judge sign.
Commissioner Flores?
Second.
Uh, second, Commissioner Vasquez, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries 4-0. Uh, David, item made, close session, consultation.
You know, there is one, one thing that we would, I'd like to discuss with you.
Yes. Okay, close session, consultation, Texas Government Code, A, 5514071 for Institute, Attorney Client Privilege, B, 5514071 for NC1 for Wednesday, Contemplative Litigation. Uh, court will now go into executive session, if y'all will give us the room so we can go into executive session.
Do you have a room?
Come on. We'll wait for the little red light to turn on. No other comments? This meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all so much for, for showing up, uh, at a late night meeting.